All right, so, once again, my name is Stacy Smith. I'm so excited to be participating in this event tonight with the, some of the lovely ladies who are running for Cincinnati City Council, hoping to make our city a better place. Very quickly, the structure of the evening is going to be, we're all going to introduce ourselves. It's going to be a little on the rapid-fire side. So, we're going to introduce ourselves and share why we want you to vote for us in November. And then, we are going to take turns presenting topics that we will discuss as a panel. Now, as attendees, you are welcome to use the chat. You are welcome to use the Q and A to discuss with us. Panelists, you're welcome to engage attendees on the chat and the Q and A if you'd like to, or you can focus your attention on the discussion. It's completely up to you. I just ask that everyone, panelists, attendees, remain respectful. In fact, that is an expectation of these panel discussions that I have, and I anticipate that we will not have an issue with that. One more note, because this is happening in real life. You know, some individuals may need to step in and out as needed. We have moms on here. I have cats that are appearing on screen. So, this is real life, and it's, it's all good. So, that being said, let's go ahead and get started. This is Lucy, by the way. Let's go ahead and get started. I would love to start the night off with a candidate who I am just now getting to know. Mika, would you like to give us your minute 30-second spiel on why we should vote for you?
Oh, my goodness, well, I'm so honored I get to go first. So, first of all, I want to say, Stacy, thank you so much for bringing all of us together. And to my co-panelists, thank you for taking the time to be here. I'm really excited to be with you. So, my name is Mika Owens, and I am running for Cincinnati City Council. I am born and raised in this great community. And, you know, while we've seen so much growth, growth and prosperity across our city, we also know that there are neighborhoods and people and families that need our attention. And so, we are dealing with a community that is facing high eviction rates, families who cannot find, the inability to find housing that is quality and affordable. And so, we're talking about quality of life. And so, as a mom who's raised her son in these neighborhoods, I certainly understand the value of healthy communities. You know, I was raised in a union household. I grew up where my dad went to work before the sun came up every single morning. My mom retired from American Airlines. But yet, you know, I come from a working-class family. But yet, I was able to watch my mom run a retail business right in the basement of our home. So, I certainly understand and have been, the values of entrepreneurialism and hard work have been instilled in me. And so, you know, as a small-business owner, I certainly understand the value of investing in small businesses for people that look like me. In fact, you know, after college, I started two small businesses. I worked as an organizational development consultant. And I also started a business around sales, marketing, and event planning. I also started as a Mary Kay consultant. And so, while I have enjoyed being a small-business owner, my true passion has always been serving our community. And so, the past four years, I worked in our Clerk of Courts Administration, where we have prioritized access to justice and making our courts more reflective of the diversity in our community. I've advocated for equitable transportation for students living in our district. And in 2016 and in 2018, I worked as a community organizer, because I was inspired to fight for things that I believe in. And in 2020, I co-founded the Greater Cincinnati Voter Collaborative, where we brought together 52 nonprofit organizations to help provide credible, safe information and access for voters in, in our city. And so, I know how to advocate, I know how to work with people, and I know how to get things done. So, if elected, I will be the leader that fights for the everyday working families. I will improve transparency and access, and I will always be accessible. So, please consider following our campaign today and getting involved. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you so much, Mika. So impressive. I'm just blown away by you. Next, Jamie, would you like to introduce next?
Sure, thank you, Stacy. Hello, my fellow women candidates. I am so honored to be here tonight. For anybody who doesn't know me, my name is Jamie Castle. I am a mother of two, 12-year-old and a 10-year-old. Say hi, Finn. He just snuck up on me. There he is. Yes, very real-time. And I'm also a teacher for Cincinnati Public Schools. I grew up in Green Hills and went to half-Catholic, then half-public schools. Other way around, though. Graduated from Roger Bacon and then went to Miami University, graduated '99, and went back to Roger Bacon to teach. And I did that for a while with English and drama. And then, I took a break. I got very burnt out, as many teachers do when they're young and have their hands full, and did real estate for a while. I also was in restaurant business for, gosh, 20 years, part-time. That's where I met my husband. And we had our family. But when my kids were very little, I was staying home with them, but I still wanted to be more busy. And I started my own business sewing and did projects around town for restaurants and for movies, actually. I did all the costumes for Annabelle movies, so fun fact. I was just living my mom life. I was volunteering. I was the PTO president. I was president of my church, juggling everything. I was coaching soccer. I was directing a theater production with 55 elementary students. And then, I discovered that there was a need for a Democratic candidate for Congress, and that was my crazy experience last year. I just jumped into that. I didn't have any previous political aspirations. I just wanted to give people an option, a choice. There were eight counties and District 2, and my parents lived in one of them way out east. And I knew that there needed to be a lot done. So, I stood up for the everyday people wanting to vote for them on behalf of them. And, you know, I gave it my all, and I knew it was a long shot, and that's all I was doing. But after the election, supporters reached out to me, mentors reached out to me, and they said, "Hey, you are good at this, and you would be good at this. And this is an actual opportunity that we have for our city." So, I am bringing that passion and drive to this situation. I think it's a great opportunity for our city to, you know, really imagine our future and where we want to go with that. And I am here to represent the people again and to be that voice and to be that advocate, the champion, for all that feel like they're not being represented. So, I'm very much for teachers in education and small business and the restaurants that are struggling and the theater that's struggling. But also, I have big visions for our city that I'm so excited to be a part of.
Thank you so much for putting yourself out there to run, like, in a race for the first time. That's huge, that's so ambitious. So, thank you for doing that. That's really, really admirable and inspirational. Councilmember Keating, would you like to introduce next and tell the voters why they should vote for you in November?
Sure. First, I want to thank Stacy for hosting this meet-and-greet. I'm really excited to get to know these incredible women on the screen with me. And, and to give you guys a chance to, to meet me, I'm Liz. I am a fifth-generation Cinsinadian. I'm a marketing director. I'm a mom. I have a three-and-a-half-month-old and a two-year-old. And I was appointed to City Council in December. And since joining Council, I've been on the Budget and Finance Committee, the Law and Public Safety Committee, the Economic Growth and Zoning Committee, and the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And I'm doing this because I want to raise my kids in a city where every child has food on the table, a roof over their head, and equal opportunities in their future. And that, it's just so important to me. And I think this past year, Council has been distracted and in a very reactive mode. And obviously, for good reason, we've got a pandemic. We've, we've had corruption. We've had social unrest. And I think coming out of this crisis, my number-one priority as a council member in working with my, my colleagues is to get back to the basics. The number-one job of our city government is basic services. We need to keep the water running. We need to keep the streets paved. We need to respond to emergencies. We need to be able to pick up the trash. Our kids need to be able to cross the street safely to get to school. We need to be able to safely drive to work following a snowstorm. You know, we've got an incredible, talented staff that work at the city who have done an amazing job leading us through this crisis. But they are overworked. They are stretched so thin, and we're not giving them the support they need, and we're starting to fall behind on those basic services. And so, I think going forward, I think Council and, and I'm hoping to take the charge on that is, is to getting us back to the basics. And the beauty of that is it's nonpartisan work. I'm such a big believer in nonpartisan work. I've actually hired a staff from both sides of the aisle. I'm working to find common ground with all of my colleagues and find things that we're passionate about, so we can work on legislative work together. And the great thing is, is there's no Republican or Democratic way to fill a pothole. You know, we can do this together. And if we can nail these basic services, we're going to give ourselves the capacity to take a proactive approach on the biggest challenges facing our city. And those are things like affordable housing, like childhood poverty, like workforce development. If we can nail those small things, we're going to be setting, setting ourselves up to succeed on those big things. And I, I see a lot of hope and, and bright future for Cincinnati. And I think we can get there by getting back to the basics. And with, with that being said, my number-one job is being a mom. We just finished dinner, and we've got bath and bed. So, I'm going to stay on for as long as I can, and I will add to jump. Anyone on the call that's listening, if you do have questions or you need anything, we're here to serve you. Please reach out, and we're here to help you. You can contact my office. You can also find out more about my campaign at voteliskating.com and hope, hope to meet you along the way and earn your vote in November. Thanks again, Stacy, for having us.
Absolutely. And thank you for prioritizing your family. Family comes first. Councilmember Sunderman, I also understand that you have little ones who may have to go to bed soon. So, if you would like to introduce yourself and tell voters why should they vote for you in November?
Yeah, their bedtime's at 8:00, so I gotta leave a little before then, or else they're total garbage tomorrow. But, and if, if one of them has a tantrum, I might have to leave. But I, we're good for now. I have them set up with a movie. So, I'm Betsy Sunderman. It is awesome to meet all of you. I would like to invite any of you out for coffee or lunch, if you feel comfortable with that, or like a virtual coffee or lunch. Because, hey, one of my goals is to know everybody in the city and be everybody's friend. So, help me accomplish that. But I'm like this weird east-west sider. I was raised on the east side, and then my husband somehow talked me into moving to the west side. So, now, we live in East Price Hill. So, I was raised in Hyde Park. Now, I live in East Price Hill. So different. I mean, the issues in the communities could not be more different. So, I feel like that gives me a good handle on different issues in the city. I was, yeah, born and raised in Cincinnati. My whole family moved out to the suburbs for a couple of years, and then we said, "We are city people." So, we all moved back to the city, to different neighborhoods. I just love the city. It breaks my heart that most of my friends, when they have kids, they end up moving to the suburbs. And one of my goals on Council is to kind of create a city that my kids want to stay in someday. And my kids don't want to move away for college, and they don't want to move out to the suburbs. They want to actually stay in the city, because I love the city. A little bit about my background. I was a social worker right after college, and I worked in juvenile court. I loved it. So, then I went to law school, because I liked court so much. And then, I started working at the County Prosecutor's Office, and I was there for like 15 years. And then, I went to probate court. I just like being in court. So, then I went to probate court. I was a magistrate, so I over, I heard like adoption hearings and guardianships and wills in estates and fun stuff. And now, I'm on City Council. So strange. So, yeah, Jan-Michelle and I started about a week apart. And I said, "Let's be best friends, because everybody else is getting indicted around here." And so, we've been very good friends. And now, we have Liz, which is so cool. When I started on Council, I was the only woman. So, I would love to have a ton of women on Council, because we can get good stuff done, right? So, I also am bipartisan, like Liz was pointing out. I'm actually married to a very politically active Democrat. So, that's how, that's how bipartisan I am. So, we fight over what political party our kids will be. We'll see. We like to buy them like little donkeys and elephants and see what they like better. We're trying to, anyway. But, uh, yeah, so I work with everybody on Council. And, I mean, as a Republican, you have to work with other people to get stuff done. Even as a Democrat, you have to work with other people to get stuff done. So, I'm all about that, too. I also think we need a big ethics reform. That's one of the big things of the year, because people are getting indicted. So, I'm the only one running for Council who has proposed a charter amendment to try to fix the ethics issues. So, that's one thing I'm addressing. I'm trying to keep spending down, just like Liz was saying. Our basic job is basic public services. If we have extra money, it's great to throw extra money at projects. But we have to, you know, get people's garbage, plow their snow, have police and fire, have all the basic services before funding other things.
Very good. Thank you so much for your introduction. And thank you for your passion for making City Council or City Hall a less corrupt place. Our city definitely needs that. Michelle, would you like to present next and, and tell us why we should vote for you in November?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Local politics absolutely makes a difference in people's lives, and that's why I'm running for City Council. I believe everyone needs a friend at City Hall, not just the wealthy and connected. It's not always easy to fight for what's right, but it is definitely who I am and who I've been. I learned that as a mom of a son with cerebral palsy, fighting against the school district to get what he needed. I learned that as a social worker, serving people with mental illness. But at the end of the day, it was safe, affordable housing that was our biggest challenge, always. I learned that working at City Hall for four years for former Vice Mayor David Crowley. He included me on initiatives around gun violence, environment, services for low-income seniors. So, last time I ran, our campaign lost by a handful of votes. But I continued to show up at City Hall to educate and testify on how policies that were being passed were being harmful to our residents and taxpayers. You know, I sponsored two petitions to challenge the use of millions of public tax dollars to fund the FC Soccer Stadium. I led an effort to save the Over the Rhine Senior Center. That was successful. I've also helped found local coalition groups to help build up equitable development policy advocacy to help empower residents to fight for what they want in their neighborhoods, not just out-of-town developers looking to profit. So, and that's just in the last couple of years. A lot of times, it can feel like the game is rigged, right? At City Hall, working people, people with low incomes can feel like, you know, how can they ever really expect any change? We really need people elected who will stand with people, who can identify with what over half of us struggle with, which is barely making ends meet and not making really good wages and facing high-rising rents. We need someone who can stand with them and fight with them. So, I am a fighter, and I'm asking for your vote so that you can get me to City Hall, and we can fight together for our future. Thank you.
And thank you for being such a passionate advocate. I mean, like, you have put in work. It's impressive, and it's noticed. Councilmember Jan-Michelle, would you like to present next?
Sure, thank you. Well, Stacy, thank you so much for having me. And to all, to all the other women panelists, it's really an honor to be here with you. You know, I can tell you just a little bit about myself. I grew up in Avondale and went to Cincinnati Public Schools. I went to Rockdale Elementary. I'm a proud Rockdale graduate. Went to Walnut Hills High School, went away to college, to Dartmouth College. While in college, I went to an HBCU, Talladega, for a while. That was my dad's alma mater. And he said, "Now, you've got to go to an HBCU. You need to really see a black college." And it was a fantastic experience, so I'm really glad I did that. Later, I went to Harvard Law School, and I was in Barack Obama's class. So, that's, you know, that's been a lot of fun to see him rise to the presidency. And, and I, I think he was a really great president and just a fantastic person. And then, so came back to Cincinnati. You know, I love Cincinnati. This is home. And, you know, it's, it's, it's the place I really want to be. While here and while practicing law, I met a guy who said, "You know, we should get together and buy the Cincinnati Herald. It's a black newspaper that's been around since the 1950s. It's for sale. Let's start a publishing company." I later married that guy, Eric Kearney, and we did start a, a black multimedia publishing company, Sesh Communications. We bought the Cincinnati Herald and some other publications. So, I am an entrepreneur. I know what it's like to struggle. We've had our ups and downs. Some of our downs have been very public, and we have powered through them. At the time, it seemed horrible. But then, I realized, you know, when you go through hard times, you learn lessons and you have something to share. So, I do a lot of seminars for businesses, and it's kind of funny. I'm usually the one who comes on to say, you know, "What do you do when everything around you starts crashing? How do you survive?" And that's, that's usually my, my piece of it, to show, you know, "When everything comes crashing down, here's what you do to stay afloat and to survive." I keep that in mind on City Council. I never thought I'd be in politics in the forefront. You know, I worked on lots of campaigns. My husband was in the Ohio Senate. He was Ohio Minority Leader. And I worked on lots of Barack's campaigns, even when he was running for US Senator from Illinois. So, I've done, you know, a lot of campaigning. But back in March, I was asked to fill a vacant seat on Council. And I thought, "Oh, my goodness, you know, me, you know, on City Council, you know, really couldn't believe it." But my life has been a life of service. That's what my parents taught me. That's what I've done. I've served on so many nonprofit boards, community councils. That's what I've done, and that's always been a really important value. I also had just read Stacey Abrams' book, Lead From the Outside. And she said, "Women are often reluctant to say yes." And so, that's why I'm really excited to see you, you know, all of you. Because she said, you know, "Have the audacity to step out there and say, 'Yes, I'll serve. I can do it.'" You know, a lot of times, men, and no offense to them, but they feel they're qualified when they don't even have the qualifications that we have. And we're like, "Can we really do this job?" So, she's like, "Get out there and serve." So, you know, I thought about that. I thought about my parents, who said, you know, "You have a responsibility to, to your community." And so, service is what my life has been about. So, I said, "Yes." And, you know, it's been really an honor to serve and fight for the people of Cincinnati. We have so many needs. I am a mom. My kids are 16, you know, which is a rough age. You know, if anybody has a teenager, he's wonderful. And my daughter is 23. So, you know, being on City Council has been a challenge, because there are a lot of needs. You know, we've had high unemployment, you know, which means gun violence has gone up. And so, I started the Avondale Safety Group. You know, affordable housing. You know, people have, have lost their homes, they've lost their jobs, their businesses have failed. I mean, we're in a real crisis, and so, there's been a lot of work to do. But, you know, fighting for and working for the people of Cincinnati is what gets me up every day, like this morning at 2:50 a.m., because I was thinking about, you know, some of the issues that are facing us. And I woke up and I, you know, came down to, to my computer and started doing research. So, actually, meeting the people across the city and talking to people all day, you know, being, being accessible, I'm working with my colleagues. It's, it's just been a fantastic experience. I love it. I can't believe I love it. I thought it would be about like fighting with people all the time, but it's really about fighting for people. It's about fighting for positive change. And so, I am excited to be on City Council. I'm excited to, to represent the people of Cincinnati, all 300 and 2,000. And I'm excited for Cincinnati to move forward. We're going to get out of this pandemic. I do a town hall almost every Saturday, and we have, we have people to call in and, and talk to the experts about how do we get through this. So, we are seeing the light at the end of the, of the tunnel. But, you know, there's a lot in front of us. There are a lot of, there's a lot of suffering going on. So, we've got to pull together and keep working together.
Very good. Thank you so much. And the fact that you were in, you know, President Obama's class just blew my mind. I did not know that about you. That's amazing.
Okay, he was one of the nicest and smartest people at the school. He was great.
I don't doubt that. He just, he has that charm, you know? Well, thank you, thank you for sharing.
Stacey is one of the nicest and smartest people that I've ever met, too.
Oh, Liz, you're wonderful. Thank you.
Something about that class.
Yeah, you know, all of us on Council, you know, we're in different parties, different backgrounds. You know, we don't agree on a lot of things. We don't vote together on a lot of things. But I tell you, we, we support each other as, as human beings and as, as public servants. And, you know, I just love that about my colleagues.
That's awesome to hear. Well, thank you for sharing. My name is Stacy Smith. I am also running for City Council. And my, my career journey started in college when my cousin, my hero, one of my best friends, died by suicide very suddenly. And I quickly changed my major from music education to psychology, because I thought, "I want to avenge him. The best way I know how is to help people who are struggling, like he clearly was." So, graduated with my bachelor's in psychology, went on to get my master's in clinical mental health counseling, got licensed in the state of Ohio, and I've been working with all ages ever since. And in that, I've seen so many holes that are, are being missed in just the fight for people's mental health. So, like, I've said this before, I am expected to treat a child who has PTSD, but they live in a neighborhood that continues to experience gun violence. That doesn't make sense to me. So, I am running for City Council, one, to, to give mental health more of a stage when we're talking about basic needs. I know that we talk a lot about safety, food, shelter, housing, you know, filling potholes, getting the streets plowed, policing, fire, things of that nature. But where is mental health considered in all of those things? And mental health really has a, has a tie-in in all of those. So, food shortages are bound to affect people's mental health. Not having affordable places to live are bound to affect people's mental health. And I believe that in order for us to really, you know, take those steps to improve the mental health and mental wellness services in our city, maybe we should have a licensed therapist kind of helping guide and direct that. And I, I didn't know of any others who were, you know, wanting to do that at this time. So, I decided, "Hey, let's give it a shot. This is important. I have ideas, I have passion." So, if, if mental health is what you would consider a basic need that needs to be addressed in our city, then I would love to have your vote in November. So, to, to move into the next part of our discussion tonight, attendees continue to use the chat and the Q and A. Both of those are open. Panelists, you're welcome to respond to the, to the Q and A or the attendees. In the chat, panelists, you have to change the recipients to all panelists and attendees for them to see your responses. So, you're welcome to engage in that way if you'd like. Again, I just ask that everything remain respectful. And I'll also make sure that everyone, all the panelists, get a copy of the, all, all of the questions that are submitted tonight in case you want to follow up with anyone who asks anything. So, the next portion of our evening, each panelist is going to take a turn giving a, a topic that they would like us, for us to spend about 10 minutes discussing. Now, not all panelists have to respond to every, everything that's brought up. There might be some things where I'm like, "Hey, I am not an expert in this area, so I'm going to learn from my colleagues and form an opinion later." That's fine. So, don't feel pressured to answer every single question. But Councilmember Sunderman, with respect to you and your family and your time constraints, I would love for you to present your topic first, and then we will, we will discuss for 10 minutes or so.
Sure. And since you mentioned mental health, I should probably mention that my other job besides City Council is I'm a lawyer, and I do mental health cases. So, today, I went into court for a few hours this morning defending people who are getting committed to psych facilities. Yesterday, I ran around psych hospitals all day, visiting my clients. So, yeah, so if we're both on Council, we can do stuff together with that. Okay.
Can I throw it? I was a psych major.
She knows Barack Obama, and she's a psych major.
I was a psych major, yes, Stacy. I was really excited to hear you're a psych major. That was, that's... That was, that's wonderful.
Were you Obama's, uh, were you his moot court partner? That's what I heard.
No, so Verna Williams, who is the dean of UC Law School, was Michelle Obama's moot court partner. They graduated before we got, they graduated in nineteen eighty-eight and we got there. They graduated in the spring, we got there in the fall.
Okay, that's cool. All right, so my topic, I have so many topics I could discuss. But my topic of the week is Cincinnati Public Schools. And in case you're wondering, why am I talking about Cincinnati Public Schools as a Cincinnati city council person? Then my answer to that is, we talk about all kinds of issues that affect people in Cincinnati. We've been, Jan Michelle and I have been working on Lincoln Heights, a gun range that we want to move from Lincoln Heights. And that's not in Cincinnati. We deal with gun violence, we deal with human trafficking, all kinds of stuff that doesn't exactly tie to our services. We open forums for discussion. And there was an article today about the Cincinnati School Board and some texting they did and that they were trying to limit public comment. So for even more reason, I think we need to address this and have public comment. So just how this affects me personally, I have two little girls. One is seven and one is four. The four-year-old is the one who will probably interrupt us at some point. But my seven-year-old was at Dater Montessori, one of the CPS magnet schools, one of those awesome schools people camped out for before the lottery started and everything. So we got in there the first year of the lottery. We love Dater Montessori. Oh, my God, we love it. So I was the Girl Scout troop leader. I still am. We're going to stay there for Girl Scouts. But, uh, I mean, we've gotten really tight with these families. We have them over to our house, pre-COVID we did. And then my little four-year-old was supposed to start preschool this year, um, at Dater Montessori. But she would have had to start on a computer. So we just kept her at her daycare preschool because that was open full-time. But going through the first three months of virtual learning, we got zero instruction from our school, like zero, none, no, no assignments, anything. So we kind of just hung in there and thought, let's wait till the fall. I bet everything will be better. And then in the fall, we got a new teacher and she was new to the school and she's awesome. But it was just like total madness, just telling kids to be quiet and mute themselves. And, you know, the kids were just acting a little crazy because they hadn't been in a structured setting for a while. So my daughter really didn't learn much. Um, and then they did this hybrid thing. And we got about three hours of instruction over three days. And then she would go to school for two days. Those two days were good. But most of it was like independent reading time where they didn't give us anything to read. We were just really disappointed. But aside from the educational part of it, the mental health part of it, what you were talking about, my seven-year-old just started kind of mentally imploding and she was crying every day. And she missed her friends and she forgot how to have conversations. And she was like glued to her tablet and she like couldn't even talk to us. It was just so unlike her. She's an extreme extrovert, kind of like me, if you've noticed. And she was just not talking to anybody. She was sleeping in our bed every night for about six months. She was crying every night. It was just not her. It was very weird. So we ended up taking her out of Cincinnati Public Schools and putting her in a private school. And that was a horrible decision, but we did it. And then she like slowly started getting back to herself. But she was a year behind in school because we did Cincinnati Public for about ten months. And, I mean, her teacher was awesome, but she just didn't learn very much. And in second grade, she should have really mastered reading and writing and she just didn't. And when she got to her new school, she was upset because she was behind the other kids. She was top in her class at Dater. She was a year behind everybody at her new school. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. And that's why I've been so outspoken about this. So we've learned that socially, mentally, the CPS kids, a lot of them are not getting what they need. A lot of them, um, there are these community learning centers at a bunch of the schools. And at these community learning centers, the kids have not been going to the dentist as much, to the doctor. They haven't been getting their mental health referrals. I've talked to some of the mental health workers at CPS and they say they're really worried. They haven't had contact with a lot of these kids in a long time. So I understand, because my own daughter went through all that stuff and she has very involved parents who, you know, care about that kind of stuff. I can only imagine for some families that don't have the time or resources to do those kind of things, how much their kids are suffering right now. My four-year-old now is in preschool five days a week. I know CPS is doing four days a week, but she has to wear a mask. And I get why we're wearing masks. I get it's safe. But for a preschooler to be learning like numbers and letters and sounds and speech and learning how to socially relate to other people, you know, while only seeing their eyes. She hasn't been able to play with her friends at school. I say, did, did you play with your friends? She says, oh, no, we can't play because of coronavirus. I waved to them across the room, you know, all kinds of social emotional things going on. And from the research I've read, um, schools are the most controlled environment. Schools are the safest place for our kids. Michelle saying no. But it's okay, we can agree to disagree. But schools are a place where kids can be spaced out. They can have hand sanitizer, they can wear masks. Whereas if they go to a restaurant or a movie or a family event or something like that, those restraints are not in place. So that's why the schools are safer. And now with the teachers being vaccinated and it being the safest place for the kids, I think there should be a five-day in-person option. I also think there should be a virtual option. And honestly, from talking to all these school board members and everybody, I think everybody thinks there should be like a five-day option in person and a really good virtual option at the school. I think, um, I think where we disagree is the timing of it. Where some school board members say, let's wait until it's safe and then we'll come up with a plan. Whereas I was yelling for an entire year, come up with a plan now. And then when you're ready, you can implement the plan. But there is, there is no plan. So now they said, now they're going to start talking about virtual options. And that's really frustrating.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in for a moment, Betsy.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm probably going over my time.
That way we all have time to, to discuss some of the points that you raised. I'll start, um, just very briefly. I am a, I'm a partner in, in CPS as well as in other school districts in the city as well, a mental health partner. And one of the things that I would, I would like to just encourage everyone, and this is not necessarily have to do with, you know, reopening or, you know, timelines for things or plans. But I want to remind everyone that we need to proceed very carefully with how we have these discussions because it can very easily become a versus situation when it's really not. So I've, I've seen a lot of conversations where it's suddenly parents versus teachers or teachers versus school board, when in fact, it's all of these individuals who are trying to do the best that they can with a really horrible situation. And unfortunately, no option is perfect. And everyone has to weigh, you know, which option has the least amount of risk to the least amount of individuals. So, you know, I, I appreciate that, you know, council member Sunderman, this comes from a very personal place. You saw your child who went from, you know, thriving and excelling to now being behind, which, you know, leads me to ask some questions, you know, should, should some of, you know, the requirements of schools and the expectations of our students, should some of those have been lowered this year so that students can just focus on maintaining, learning about their social skills instead of calculus? Or even, you know, some of the work that second graders are doing now? Like, is that necessary for a second grader in a pandemic? While they're in school or in remote, can they be focusing on learning coping skills in the classroom? Can they focus on mastering, like actually mastering skills that they learned in first grade and were starting to learn in second grade? So I, I almost wish that that approach had been taken. It would have been way less pressure on our teachers, way less pressure on our students. And I feel like it, it would not have put us in such a, um, in such a volatile kind of climate when it comes to discussion of that. So that's, that's my piece. Michelle.
Because, you know, I want to ground the conversation in some reality and that is about resources. So it's totally relevant for council member Sunderman to talk about this. Why? Because every Wednesday, city council sits there and exempts millions upon millions of property taxes from Afar rolls. And this is how we, for the most part, fund public education in the state of Ohio, even though it's been ruled unconstitutional. So yes, it's, it's totally appropriate for council member Sunderman to talk about why our local public schools are failing our children. But I just want to offer that part of that failure is because of predominantly Republican policy that has over the years stripped and taken away desperately needed funding from public schools, from the federal level to the state legislature, all the way right here to Cincinnati, where, um, we don't have enough resources to do all the wonderful things that our suburban peer districts are able to do for our children. And it is wrong. And on that.
And then my response to that is, where did all these millions of dollars in CARES Act money go? Why wasn't that used to update the technology? I mean, if we had started this a year ago with all the CARES Act money, like when we got it for the city, we started spending it on things that helped right away. Why?
Well, the district has spent, so the district hosting twenty percent of all children who have internet connectivity now, that's being hosted by the school district. So it's important to have accurate information, especially when you are a leader in our city and the people that you are serving is predominantly children going to our city's public schools. Yes, there's a percentage of us.
How many billions of dollars in CARES Act money did the schools get and where did that go?
Well, this is a good subject for our theory.
Michelle, go ahead and, Michelle, you can go ahead and finish what you were saying previously.
Well, I'm just saying that these are good issues. And it takes, um, leadership who knows how to bring people together, all in the same room, to have the important conversations and, you know, the collaborative. You know, you want collaborative policymaking. And when I'm elected to city council, I hope to serve, um, on the education committee, which is what I staffed when I worked for former Vice Mayor Crowley. And what he did is he regularly had people on the school board come to city hall and work collaboratively through lots of problems. At that time, it was the master facilities plan. So leadership matters, um, facts matter. And hopefully, we can move forward with some more positive discussion instead of getting on talk radio and sort of beating each other up, which is not productive for the families that we are wanting to serve. So.
Well, we are going to start joint meetings with the school board. I did talk to them about that. And we're going to start that ACIS committee again, where we have joint meetings.
How often will those be occurring?
They used to happen quarterly. So that's what Carolyn Jones, the school board president, called me about it. And she said quarterly, she thought was good, but we can tweak it to more or less.
It's a start. I'm glad to hear that those are starting again. So thank you for that info. Jamie, I know that you are a teacher at Walnut, which has kind of been the center of this. So we would love to hear your uninterrupted thoughts.
Thank you, Stacy. So I work at many buildings, Walnut being one of them. My daughter is a seventh grader at Walnut. I also work a lot at Hyde Park School, Mount Washington School. Today I was at Spencer, a little tired, we had a long lockdown drill. But what I want to say about this topic is, we cannot politicize it. We cannot make it divisive. We have to be helpful, not hurtful, because there is no long line of teachers waiting to take over. The morale is so low right now of teachers trying to struggle to keep up. Plans keep changing, the schedule keeps changing. And they are balancing so many things right now that we have got to give them grace. We've got to give ourselves grace as parents and our children grace. I have two kids that are struggling too with remote. But you know what they're doing? They're surviving a pandemic and we have to keep that big picture. We can catch up, they can catch up. I hope that next year and in the years to come, Cincinnati Public will have a big influx of volunteers and we can do tutoring in these schools. I think a lot of people will step up to do that and that's what it's going to take. And I, I believe that, you know, we're full of good people in this city and that can happen. We need to be a good partner to the schools. We need to not take away their tax money. For so long, we've been asked to do more with less and it's not fair. They have been not given the right, I guess, appreciation right now, I think. And that really needs to happen.
You know, I just want to pitch in because, um, I grew up with, um, you know, my mom was a, was a Cincinnati public school teacher. She's now deceased. My mother-in-law, who's still living, was also a Cincinnati public school teacher. In fact, um, they, they, they had classrooms right next to each other, which is just kind of weird that, you know, that their kids ended up getting married. But, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's tough. It's really tough, you know? My heart goes out to the parents and teachers. You know, I think, I think Jamie really hit the nail on the head that, uh, we've got to work together in this. You know, I understand, you know, Betsy's frustration. I mean, you know, we've been talking about that a lot at work, you know? And, and lots of parents have talked about, you know, how their children are struggling. You know, I also have friends who are teachers and, um, you know, some of them actually, you know, they've been in tears on the phone because they were saying there's no way they can actually social distance at school because, you know, you have to, you hug your children. I mean, you, you hug your students and, you know, you, you know, wipe their noses and, you know, it's, it's, it's hard. You know, you can't, you can't really social distance. And so, um, you know, a lot of teachers are really afraid for their lives. And, you know, parents were afraid for their children. So everybody, you know, this has never happened to us before. You know, we've never been in this situation. So we do have to give each other grace. I mean, I don't think there's one right answer, like there's one side that's wrong or one side that's right. I mean, we, you know, we're all in this and, um, you know, all of this is to say, my heart just goes out to everyone because I just know it's really tough. You know, I do, um, you know, I do hear a lot of criticism of CPS and that breaks my heart because I know that, you know, CPS is, you know, working hard. Lauren Mitchell, I think, is just a great superintendent. I have so much respect for her. Her mom actually taught at Rockdale, you know, when, when I was there. So, um, you know, we, we, we go way back. And, you know, and, and Jamie, you know, thank you to you for all the work you do in the schools. I mean, it's, it's hard. And, you know, Betsy as a parent, you know, Liz as a parent. I mean, it's, you know, Michelle with the, with the CFT. I mean, it's, you know, it's just tough. And so, um, you know, I, I just appreciate that everybody's struggling together to try to find the right answer for our kids. We, you know, we want to keep them safe, we want to keep them healthy, want teachers to be safe and healthy. And, um, I don't know that anyone has the answer. I don't think there is the answer. I think that's why the plans keep changing to try to see what's going to work.
I agree. There's, there is no perfect solution to this monster, this situation. Before I toss it to Mika.
I was going to say, and I'll just echo just to close that conversation. So for one, you know, throughout this pandemic that we've all been, um, dealing with, I have been reminded that there are silver linings in everything. One is, as a community, as a nation, we have demonstrated our resilience and our innovation as people. And so I just want to say, I get, I have the utmost respect to parents, educators and administrators. You all outside of the healthcare professionals, um, you all have definitely been on the front line. And so, um, you know, hats off and kudos to you because I couldn't imagine dealing with this. And just to echo the same sentiments, this is, this is a true moment of collaboration. And as we come together as a community, and let's continue finding ways to innovate. Let's continue finding ways to innovate around how students are actually learning. And so as, as, as a city, um, I think, you know, as we work adjacent with CPS, we need to just empower the board to make the best decisions possible. And as a city, be supportive of that. And so, you know, we're, this idea, this theme of collaboration is something that's going to, uh, take this city moving forward. And it's time for us to do the big, bold and bright things. And that's coming together, laying aside the blame, just focusing on one step at a time, right?
Which brings us right into the topic that Mika, you wanted to present. So this would be a perfect segue. Take it away.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Stacy. Yeah. So uh, thank you, Stacy. So my question is around, you know, considering the hyper partisan politicized divisive political culture that we find ourselves in right now. If elected to council, how will you, how will we effectively work with our colleagues to create a collaborative environment?
Oh, I would love to jump in on that because we're doing that. So let me just say, like, one thing that's really exciting is the Economic and Zoning Committee, um, which I just joined. Let me, let me tell you, there's seven committees on City Council. I'm now officially on all seven, which is like kind of crazy. But because I, you know, when I first started, it's like, I've got to be on, you know, I've got to be in these committees. And I ended up joining that. I got appointed Chair of the Neighborhoods Committee, which I wasn't on before. And now um, and now the Economic Zoning, I just joined that because Vice Mayor Smitherman started the Subcommittee on Affordable Housing. And so you've got all of us working together on finding solutions. And I think that's exciting because, you know, that is a huge issue in the city. So um, so, you know, you see like Steve Gooden bringing in, um, I don't know if people have heard about this Housing Impact Fund in Charlotte, but he and Liz Keating brought in a speaker um who's doing that in Charlotte, buying up vacant buildings and getting private investors and turning them into affordable housing. And so um, everybody was really excited about that. So, you know, they brought the speaker in. You know, people are just, you know, we've been working with the porch to try to see like, you know, what what's the inventory? You know, what do we have out there? You know, we need to know. You know, they've got this land bank, but they're managing, you know, the land bank with all of all of these um, you know, vacant buildings. And we need to know, you know, what's the inventory? What's out there? What can we do? But the exciting thing is that everybody has ideas about how to, you know, how to tackle this issue. You know, twenty eight thousand units lacking, you know, of affordable housing in Cincinnati, forty thousand in the county as a whole. Um, but just seeing all of this work together on that, I I think is wonderful. And, you know, you can't really do anything, you know, if you're not working together. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, you can, you know, zealously represent your point, you know, we're not going to agree, and that's okay. But we have to be able to come together and say in the end, what's the solution? What are we going to do to move the city forward?
I completely agree. Um, I'll jump in and answer that very briefly. If elected to City Council, I I realize there will be other responsibilities and expectations and areas of focus. But my main, again, is going to be back to how can we improve the mental health care and mental health wellness of our city and our citizens? And as as someone said earlier, that's not a partisan issue. So if you, I think that for me personally, going into City Council with a city and citizens' mind first, while also understanding, hey, there are going to be disagreements. That doesn't necessarily mean that there need to be burned bridges because I think that if there's if there's turmoil in City Hall, that's going to spill over into, you know, City Hall's relationship with citizens or, you know, other organizations that City Hall is close to. And we cannot let that happen. So as an individual, you know, there can't be, you know, the things that we see on like the presidential debates, for example, that can't be happening on City Hall because look where that got us as a country. So as a much tighter governing body, if we can't approach each other with honor, dignity, and respect, even if we disagree and even if we may at some point be, you know, opposing sides or, you know, trying to push different policies and amendments, if that can be done with honor, dignity, and respect, I think that that will go a long way. But really keeping the focus on what does the city need? And how can we work together to accomplish these things? And what does the city want us to do? I think that taking, you know, guidance from the voters, the taxpayers, the citizens, and really working for what they want as opposed to what I as an individual want will help me um work in a more uh nonpartisan way, as as Mika was saying earlier. And I love that you said hyper partisan. I've been looking for a word to describe our culture, and that is it. So so thank you. I will open the floor to anyone else who wants to respond to Mika's point.
I'll jump in and I, oh, just real quick, you know, something that has bothered me for years, which is really a drive, one of the drivers of why I engage in running for public office, which is completely thankless and exhausting and insane. I think, I I I'll just say this, I know everybody on this screen can relate. I mean, it's a huge job. It's like having another job, running for public office, if you're really serious about it. It is a lot of work. But one thing that really drives me is that what I learned when I was at City Hall, first as an intern and then later as a legislative aide, and that was the incredible undue overbearing influence of people looking to make profits um from the city, right? Not just, I want to come in and do a development and, you know, you know, have a small business, but people literally trying to profit from taxpayer dollars. Talk about basic services. I mean, you know, we need to have a strong tax base so that we can pay for a nine one one call center, so we can pay for streets, so we can pay for our schools, police and fire. I think we could all agree on that. And what I think the biggest problem there is um the business community, just certain parts of them, right? Who come to City Hall and have lobbyists that hang out all day on the third floor trying to push their agenda over the agenda of actual taxpayers. And so I feel strongly that we need elected officials who will, like you said, Stacy, serve the taxpayers. And, you know, I think that's what was so upsetting about some of the corruption arrests that happened is that it just kind of revealed how this undue influence really took what are great people, really, we all knew these folks. I mean, some of us were friends with these folks. And I think they just fell into what can be a lot of powerful influence from powerful interests. And so um, I think the bipartisan working together stuff is if we're all grounded in what serves the taxpayer, right? That's a bipartisan, like, we can all be fiscal conservatives. I think a fiscal conservative um attitude would have not given basically the whole store away to FC Cincinnati and the billionaires that own that. That just dumbfounded me. So we have so much work to do in terms of development, in terms of making sure that the interests of the taxpayers are forefront, front and center over people coming to the city to look to profit. So I think if we can all stay grounded in that, uh, we can get a lot done.
Yeah, and I'm happy to answer. The original question, I think, was how can we work with each other, different party lines, right? Okay. So I mean, Jan, Michelle, and Liz, and I have already done that. Jan, Michelle, and I just had a um, a joint proposal that passed through council today to create a youth employment program through the Urban League. So, I mean, it was a great idea, so of course, we agreed on it. I mean, you can't just have a list of what your party believes in and just start checking those things off. That's where you get into trouble with party lines. You have to do what you think is right. And then you find other people who agree with you. It can help your cause. That's kind of how I do things. I do what I think is right. And then if Jan Michelle is on board with me, then she can come on. And I don't care what political party people are, as long as they help me accomplish the goal that I think is best for the city. So I think as long as we all go into it, doing what we think is best, you know, what what we can sleep at night, knowing that we did what we think is right, even if we disagree with each other. I mean, that's how we all work on council now. I think we have a good group of people on council where most people are doing what they really think is right.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, you know, as someone um who's new to to really being in politics, like in the forefront, just advice to everybody, you know, the the key, I think, is not to take everything so personally. But, you know, people disagree. Um, you know, they'll they'll bash your ideas. It doesn't mean, you know, it's it's not always a blight on your character because people don't agree with with your viewpoint. I mean, and maybe, you know, maybe that's that's the attorney in me because, you know, you're in court, you know. I mean, I've done a lot of litigation. I'm zealously representing my client. And then, you know, against against my opponent. And then when it's over, it's just like you see people on the football field. You know, you're shaking hands and, you know, maybe going out to lunch. Um, it's just not personal. I mean, you're there because you represent the people of Cincinnati. And, you know, everyone there wants the best for for Cincinnati. We don't always agree on what the best is. And so we have to challenge each other on that, and I think that's healthy.
I agree. I think something that's really important to me and that, you know, has has kind of been a staple in my life is when when an individual disagrees with a view or an opinion that I have, that's fine. Like, my door is still going to be open to that person. I'm still going to be, I'm still going to welcome them with open arms. I want to hear them. I want to listen to them. Now, you know, if you have an individual who dislikes my skin color, that's going to present some other issues. However, if it's on, you know, hey, I don't agree with how you voted on this. I don't agree with your policy on that. I welcome that. And I think, you know, to your point, the more people can not take disagreements so personally, especially when they're in a leadership position, the better off that will be. Uh, Mika or Jamie, did you, did you want to respond?
I will, go ahead, Jamie.
Yeah, sorry, I was, my, I have a new Greyhound rescue, and she's just discovered toys. And she's cracking me up in the background here. Um, I am Unitarian Universalist. And one of the things we really press is finding the inherent worth and dignity in each people, each person. So I lead with that in all things. I also think that it's really important that the voters, you know, you are the city, you are the taxpayers. You have to know who you're voting for. And I think if you have a vision for our city, then vote for those people because we're going to have that shared vision. I can work with anyone because I think the job is the big picture, and that's what's important. But I also have a shared vision, I think, with other candidates more than others. And you really have to do your homework and be an educated voter and see who aligns with you. And if you want certain things accomplished for this this city in the next ten years, it's really important right now that you figure out what you're going to do as far as when it's voting time. I think that when we do get on council, we have to have that sit down too, like, where do we see ourselves? We just can't be doing this day by day. I think there should be a long-term vision because we deserve that, our kids deserve that. So, yeah, I think always keeping your ego in check and seeing the bigger picture and being in it for the right reasons. We've got to lead with that.
And I'm just going to, again, agree with all of those comments. I think, you know, the the theme that I'm hearing is, of course, come leading with the moral compass of knowing that you are here representing the people. Agree to disagree, you know, assume positive intentions of other people. But I'm going to add to that, like I told you, I did event planning. And so I will be the one that says, hey, let's go out and have a cup of coffee. I truly believe the value in getting to know people. Um, relationship building is so important. And as we, as uh elected to council, looking to help lead this city, we definitely have to demonstrate that. And so we've got to get to the human uh component of of everything as well, so.
Excellent, excellent. Oh, hi, little one. Hello. Loving that attention. Thank you all for your responses. Jamie, I thought that you had a really interesting topic to present. Um, and you you kind of, again, alluded to it in your response there, so I will, I'll give the floor to you.
All right, my fellow candidates.
I'm sorry, can I, I have to say good night. I just want to say it before you say your topic, so you don't think that your topic turned me off for any reason, because I don't know what your topic is. But I need to go put these little ones to bed.
Family, family first, we understand.
Good night.
I would like to meet up with all of you for coffee. So seriously, contact me, we'll do coffee. Thanks for having me, Stacy. This was awesome.
Have a good evening. Take care. Okay, Jamie, the floor is yours.
All right. So ladies, my question was, talking about the big picture, where do you see the city, where do you hope to see the city in five years? What's your five-year vision? And how do you see yourself as far as participating in that and creating that? Anybody want to go first?
I'll just jump in.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Michelle.
I don't have anything prepared, but off the top of my head, um, you know, we have a number of indicators that we look at when we measure how thriving and healthy and inclusive a a city is. And, you know, we can look at segregation as it relates to economics or racial segregation. We can look at family poverty rates. We can look at environmental um indicators like air quality. There's so many things, and I would hope that um five years in, we could see some real movement in a positive direction on a lot of the indicators that we're doing very, very poorly on as a city. Right now, uh, members of council who've been on, and I'll excuse Councilmember Curry from this a little bit because you you just kind of got there, but, you know, there's a lawsuit against the city right now for the fact that the tax abatement program is, you know, you can look at it face value. Just look at the data, and it's racist. I mean, it has enriched white families over African-American families. And um, the, and and nothing's been done to fix it. Still, there's been no fix to that abatement program. And so there's so much ahead of us that we can do better. And so five years in, I hope that we move the needle on some of that, those issues that are the toughest, right? Um, affordability of housing, let's decrease the number of families who are not in stable, safe living spaces. Let's expand, you know, social services support because that, to me, also is critical. Let's look at um how development happens in neighborhoods, and do neighborhoods really feel included in those plans? And, you know, I could go on and on, I won't, but I hope that that we can really see some positive movement on so many things that I think the last council has sort of just, you know, painted a pretty picture. You know, they might talk about the Renaissance and over the Rhine, but, you know, go five blocks over, and there's still a lot of people not participating economically in the city, and we can do better. So that's, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I I really, um, you know, we we do have to do better. Cincinnati, as I said, is is the fifth most segregated city in the country, and that's ridiculous. So if you look at OTR, um, in 2010, it was seventy two percent black. Four years later, it was seventy five percent white. Eighty five percent of the of the black working class was displaced, moved out of over the Rhine. You know, we need development in our neighborhoods. People want development, you know, they want new businesses, you know, new homes. But they don't want to be displaced, and we can have development without displacement. We have to be able to keep our legacy residents in their homes. You know, property values go up, taxes go up, rent goes up. But we have to get in place anti-displacement measures so that people can afford to stay there. They also need to be able to take advantage of the amenities that development brings. You know, more jobs, hire from the community, uh, more job training, you know, helping businesses grow in those communities, businesses by the people who already live there. So there there are things that that we can do differently, that we're working toward doing differently because that's so important. I want to see, um, you know, our cities thrive, all of our neighborhoods thrive. You know, we we all want, you know, successful, safe, you know, affordable places to live. I mean, you know, which is another thing. I mean, we have to have housing that we're not paying more than thirty percent of our monthly income for rent or mortgage plus utilities. I mean, that's affordable. If we're paying more than thirty percent, it's not affordable. And so everybody deserves a safe, decent place to live. You know, homeownership, we've got to increase that. We have about thirty eight percent homeownership in Cincinnati, the rest of the country. You know, on the average, it's like sixty two percent. It's how you build generational wealth. But because of the history of redlining, so many low and moderate income black and brown communities, we don't own our own homes. And so we don't have that equity when it's time to, you know, send your children to college, start a business. We don't have that home equity that gives us the cash to actually do that. Also, homeownership, um, studies have shown that families are healthier, children even do better in schools. I mean, there's so many advantages that many of us are missing out on. We've got to work on that. So, you know, and racial equity, you know, there is systemic racism. Back in July, we uh declared um systemic racism, a public health crisis in Cincinnati. a public health crisis in Cincinnati. And it is. Um, it is actually across the country. And so there are a lot of, of institutional um issues that we've got to change. Now, you look at food deserts, they're in black and brown communities. You look at um, you know, environmental hazards. They're more concentrated in low and moderate income neighborhoods. I mean, the difference in life expectancy between Avondale and Mountain Lookout is something like 18 years. And that's a study done, done by the Urban League back in um 2015. I mean, we've got work to do, there is a lot of work to do. And so I see us moving toward a better Cincinnati um as we look to the future. And there are lots of issues we can work on, and we are working on them.
You know, I see a city where uh a young, single mom can thrive. She can find a job that is paying a living wage. She can find a roof over her family's head that is quality and that she can afford. You know, I see a city where we are investing in youth. We are providing access to internships and apprenticeships and opportunities like that. We are closing the wealth gap by making sure that we are providing avenues to home ownership. We are providing the opportunity to truly invest in small businesses and not just brick and mortar businesses, but those businesses that are at home-based businesses. Because you know what? A lot of women participate in that economy, the gig economy. And so when we're talking about um, you know, investing in communities, we can't forget that. We can't forget that the, the racial lens and the racial equity lens and having a commitment truly to that and our policies reflecting that, that's the type of city I see. I see a city where kids can uh have green space to run and play, right? I see a city where um students are learning and, and education is accessible at every level, including at the community college level. So I think this is our moment in time where we increase public-private partnership because we know that we have to do a lot with little. And so this is the time where collaboration and everybody getting involved, every stakeholder, which is everyone in this community, um has a place, has a voice. Um, I see a place where, you know, because I am an organizer i- in my DNA, I see a place where people are participating in democracy. They are getting involved at the local level because city council makes the decisions that have impact on our day-to-day life. And so I see a place where uh City Hall becomes more transparent and more accessible. And we are leaning on the um, the expertise of people in community. And so I see this place where we're creating an infrastructure where it's a two-way street. We are working with community councils because community councils are right there in their neighborhoods and we are incentivizing those things. And so I see a place where we're all participating and every voice matters. And we're creating a space for people to share their voice.
Awesome. I, I think the things that I would add in five years, I would like to see, I would like to help set up Cincinnati in a way that most, if not all, and I'm talking like 75, 80, 85% of employees working in the city, whether it is, you know, individuals who pick up the trash to city council members, are trained to screen for suicide so that anyone in the city can, you know, identify someone who may be at risk, ask the appropriate questions and help facilitate getting them the help that they need. I want Cincinnati to be a place where all of our employees in the jails are suicide prevention trained. And not only that, but are, that, you know, those who are in our prison system can also receive that training as well. I want to, in, in five years, for Cincinnati to increase the amount of suicide prevention-trained um teachers by, I would honestly say 75, 85, 95% increase is possible within the next five years. I also want to see Cincinnati become, or become once again, a producer of really, really excellent therapists, case managers and social workers. We have a great program in Xavier University. And unfortunately, we lost one of the more desired programs in this, in the country, actually, when Cincinnati Christian University closed its doors. The Masters of Arts in Counseling Program there was excellent and very coveted. So we, we kind of need to make up for lost ground. So we really need to not only um make sure that these programs have what they need, but to also present mental health counseling as a more desirable field and to make it more accessible. So I would once again love to see, you know, really well-trained therapists coming out of multiple schools in the city. I would also, in five years, like to see, I mean, within the next two, three years, I would like to see and hope to um make um accessible, inclusive playgrounds in at least two of our Cincinnati parks so that children who are in wheelchairs or have sensory issues or use walkers or have any kind of limited, like, physical limitations can still play on a playground. And I'm not talking like a swing, that you can take the child out of their wheelchair, put them in the swing and swing them for a little bit. I'm talking ramps that they can go up and down on their equipment. They can play with their peers, they can use all of the equipment. In five years, I would love to see that happening at three, maybe four or five of our Cincinnati State Park, Cincinnati Parks. And I would like in five years to see a government that is running smoothly and a city that trusts its government once again. And, you know, if elected, uh, these are the things that I will be pressing for in hopes that in five years, it'll be, it'll be off to a, a really good start to only get better in the future.
Stacy, that's awesome. You know, let's not wait. Let's, you know, I mean, the idea about making uh playgrounds accessible, let's talk about it now, you know, we need to talk.
Yeah, that, that's on my platform, actually. That's, if elected, that's something that I plan to accomplish while serving on council. So there's a plan, I already have, like, it budgeted even. So it's, it's already in the works.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Anything I can do to help you with that, you know, let me know. If, if, you know, you want to get started before you get on council, we can get started with that, so.
Yes, please.
Let's talk about it.
All right. Jamie.
Does it make you happy, like, just thinking about where we can be in five years with all of our big hearts? Um, for me, I see so many things. First of all, I want to see the city grow, grow in population. I think that'll increase our tax base. As far as affordable housing, everybody wants to talk about now. And I'm so glad that finally it has its bullhorn to it because we need to be talking about it. One thing that we need to use correctly is the average median income. It's often used as the entire Cincinnati region and not the city of Cincinnati. So I think when we talk about subsidies and tax abatements, we have to use the right numbers because if we're gonna incentivize projects that have affordable housing, it's gotta be the right numbers. And I think we should prioritize that. I also think we need more accessibility um projects and apartments available, housing for that. My sister has MS, mobility issues. And I'm looking at the future where she's gonna live because she's gonna need a special kind of place. And I'm sure so many people are like that too, senior housing especially as well. So increasing all sorts of housing, but incentivizing the priority, prioritized affordable housing, I want to do. My father worked at City Hall back in the 90s and early 2000s, actually my entire childhood, in the law department. And one of his projects was Fort Washington Way. And one of the things that they had the foresight to do was the way to deck to cap those. And I think that would be something that we should start planning. I'm hoping that we have federal funds coming soon, like a whole new Works Progress Administration funding coming from Biden that we can ask for and start capping these, these decks with mixed-use space, with four-story retail, with housing, like, all sorts of possibilities. I think that would be something fantastic that would connect the banks to the Central Business District. I see more trees, I mean, just making downtown more livable would be amazing. But these 52 neighborhoods, they all need something. And making, you know, life better for everyone, for all these neighborhoods, listening to their needs and improving all around Cincinnati is what I want to see happen. I want to see a vibrant arts community. I can imagine the World Cup coming here soon. I mean, all of these things that we can really build on. I love the whole Blink Festival. We need to have more things like that, that bring people here, that bring families. You know, I'm always looking for things to do with my family. And I think we need to just really build the culture and build up the morale and just have this Cincinnati pride and be someplace that, you know, others come to, to visit and then think, you know, I want to live there. So I have so many hopes and dreams and I hope to be partnering with all of you to get this done.
I think something that I always say as far as, you know, Jamie's point of, of bringing people to Cincinnati, you know, letting them see how great it is and wanting to stay. I think what's really attractive to people even more than, you know, things that are like fancy or, you know, amenities, things of that nature, those are all well and good. But I think when people see a city really invested in and taking care of its people, that is, that is what really seals the deal a lot of the time. And, you know, just, just learning about you wonderful women tonight and your passions and your hopes for the city, I, I think that, you know, we, we could be in very good hands um if, if some or all of us happen to be elected to council. So we're going to go ahead and wrap up the evening. Um, I hope that, again, anyone who um watched or participated, we thank you for your time. Time is like one of the most valuable assets and we appreciate you sharing that with us. We hope that this was informative, informative, sorry. It's been late, I've been talking to people all day. I started, uh, I start messing up my words here and there. Did anyone want to share very quickly any, any parting thoughts?
Yeah, I would like to thank you, Stacy, for inviting us. Uh, this was awesome. Um, you know, I loved hearing everybody's ideas and passions. Um, you know, I think just about everyone here I've met um really respect all of you. Um, you know, well, I think there are about 85 of us running for City Council. So I said, it's just gonna be a big party. We're all gonna be out there together all the time. And, um, you know, I just love it. So I'm just excited for everybody and, you know, all of you. Um, I would be proud to um have any of you here represent me as a citizen of Cincinnati. And so, um, you know, good luck with everybody and, you know, we'll all be working together.
Yes, thank you, Stacy.
Oh, absolutely.
On the trail, we're on the trail, it's gonna be interesting.
It will be an exciting time. And, yeah, let's just go, go serve our city and try to make it a better place. Whether or not we're elected, we can do so much good, so let's get out there and do it. Um, for those who are attending, this will be available on YouTube, um, starting, I'm, I'm gonna try to upload it, if not tonight, early tomorrow. So anyone who came in late can watch it. Panelists, you're welcome to share it. I'll also send you the video file so you can use that however you'd like. Um, I will stay on for a couple of minutes. If anyone who is attending, so panelists, you are free to go. But anyone who is attending, if you would like to give feedback, because I'm, I'm gonna keep hosting discussions like this and I want to make them better and I want to change them up as well, so it's not the same thing every time. So if anyone who is attending has any feedback or ideas that they would like to share, I'm gonna stay on for five to 10 minutes just to get some feedback for the next panel discussions. But to our lovely panelists, thank you. Have a good night and good luck in the race.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thanks, Stacy.
Absolutely. Take care.
See you.
Yeah.